Okay, just waiting for Ben. Ben is good to go, okay? I'd like to call the Saline City Council meeting to order if you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Good evening. We are working off of a new template for our agenda. So for those of you who are in the audience, there are copies on the back table. You will notice some, a slight change to the format, so do bear with us this evening. I'll call the roll. Members present this evening are council members Kamir Sulak, CEO, Del Orco, Dylan Kraus, Mayor Protam Girba, and Mayor Marl. From city staff, we have city manager O'Toole, clerk Royal, city engineer Humphris, community development director Harrington, Parks and Rec director Scruggs, and DPW director Searls. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, noting the addition of the last action item, which is 22-0200, proposal for pump station environmental assessment services. There is a memo, actually, I think two memos, perhaps even three, relating to this issue, no, just two, at the dais. And there's also a revised memo dated July the 21st from Clark Hill regarding legal services. And unless there are additional changes, again, the chair would be happy to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Moved by council member Dylan, and that was seconded by CEO.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We come now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? You will have three minutes. Please, Mrs. Hess.
Mary Hess. My comment is regarding the waiver of the water and sewer waiver. And you correct me if I'm on the wrong issue, but I'm questioning as far as the property that is outside of the city that has water and sewer connections. Years ago, they had paid triple water.
I'll stop your time. If you want to continue after my remarks, that's fine. But the item on the agenda tonight under unfinished business 22-183 is relating to the Maple Oaks property, so the former service station within the corporate limits of Saline.
Okay, but this is a waiver for the inside. What my question is, the properties that presently have water and sewer on the outside of the city, and years ago, we went to court because they were asked to pay triple charges on their water and sewer. And since this new improvements of our water and sewer, and that apparently there will not be triple charged, in fact, there isn't anything said about any additional charges. I have no problem, I'm 83, paying my fair share. But it appears that those that are in the township are really getting such a good deal at this point, and I'm concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any additional citizen comments on agenda items? Okay, the record reflect there are none. Then we move on to the one and only presentation of the evening, which is an update regarding new legal representation. City manager O'Toole, for the public, primarily for the public's benefit, would you like to introduce our guests and say some obligatory remarks on behalf of the legal services task, hiring committee, excuse me? Bless you.
Certainly. So recently, the legal services working group, I believe it was what we called it.
It's a working group.
Yeah. Went through the process of soliciting bids and identifying what is now new contractors for our legal services. We were quite impressed by the attorneys that were present for that process from Giammarco Mullins and Horton and Clark Hill. Obviously, we have an existing relationship with Clark Hill, but through that process have decided to expand that relationship and also bring in Giammarco Mullins and Horton for some of our more general services, day-to-day legal support. So we have with us John Clark and Anthony Chubb from Giammarco Mullins and Horton, and Nancy Mullet from Clark Hill, who will just very briefly introduce themselves. And certainly, if any of them would like to stay for the portion of the agenda where we actually take action on their contracts, they're welcome to do so.
Mr. Mayor, members of council staff, my name is John Clark. I'm a senior partner with a law firm at Giammarco Mullins and Horton. Been with the firm since 1995. I chair our municipal group, which is seven lawyers. We represent, in some form or fashion, probably 18 to 20 different communities, also some school districts and nonprofits. Very pleased and excited about this new relationship. I thought the legal, the legal committee did an excellent job in terms of the questions and the discussions. We actually had two separate interviews, and was very impressed by their preparedness and their questions. And so we're very pleased and excited about this relationship. We're excited to get moving forward. And if there's any questions I can address right now, I'd be happy to do so.
Very good. Before we entertain questions, again, I'd like to provide an opportunity for my two council colleagues who served on the working committee to share some remarks. So let me begin with Mayor Protam Girba. Anything else you would like to share on behalf of the working group, or anything you'd like to say about the process for the public's benefit?
The process, we had a number of firms submit. There were a few that submitted after the deadline that we had, so we had disqualified them. And working with both Clark Hill previously, and Nancy, and now John, were excellent answers to our questions. And in terms of having a little more response and quickness that we believe we wanted as a council, we feel that both of these firms will be able to handle that additional request that we wanted in the last few months, so.
Very good. Council member Dylan?
Yes, just to tag on to what Mr. Girba had said, we did realize that we do have some matters that are very specific in topic, and so seeking legal counsel that has a knowledge of those types of situations would be in the best interest of the city. So we're very excited about this new partnership.
Very good. Are there questions for Mr. Clark or his colleague, Mr. Chubb? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nancy, welcome you here this evening. Would you like to share some remarks?
Thank you, Mayor. It's nice to see all of you. It's nice to see you in person, if I've worked with you the last year or two. And it's nice to see those of you that I've just seen on the website, to actually meet you in person. I enjoy working with the city of Saline. It's a wonderful community. Your city manager, the mayor, the mayor Protam, to be able, councilperson Dylan, we've had a good chance to get to know each other and to start developing a more expanded relationship, a trustful relationship. Clark Hill is here to provide the services as efficiently and affordable as possible, and to live up to the quality of services that you expect from us. So thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any questions for Nancy? Easy enough. Thank you for your attendance this evening. Well, if there's nothing further regarding presentations from our, what will likely be our new legal team, the chair will proceed now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion unless it is requested, unless there's a request from a citizen or council member. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
By Mayor Protam Girba to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll let Del Orco be the second on that. I'll get you next time, Mr. Kamir Sulak. All those in favor approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearing item 22-195, special land use for 660 East Michigan Ave. First, we need a motion to open the public hearing, affording the public an opportunity to speak to this issue.
So moved.
All right, the public hearing will be open then. It's going to be moved by Girba, seconded by Kraus to open the public hearing at 7:11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Move to close the public hearing?
Moved by council member Dylan to close the public hearing at 7:12. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamir Sulak. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The final motion will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated July 20th, 2022, from deputy clerk Ritchie and to approve, with the condition that the final site plan receive approval from the planning commission, or approve, or not to approve, excuse me, the special land use for 660 East Michigan Avenue for medical marijuana provisioning center. Is there a motion to either acknowledge, approve with conditions, or not to approve?
Move to acknowledge and approve with conditions.
Moved by Mayor Protam Girba to acknowledge and to approve with conditions. Is there a second?
I will second.
Seconded by Kraus. Community development director Harrington, do you care to comment?
Yes. So in the original memo attached to the planning commission, the conditions approved, the conditions themselves are actually questions that planner Auerbach and myself had for the applicant. I'm still getting used to the planning process in this municipality, so the conditions were not properly applied with what the planning commission passed. So the applicant, in my opinion, sufficiently answered the questions at the last meeting, prompting the planning commission to approve the special, sorry, to recommend approval for the special land use request. And as such, I think the only condition that needs to be attached to the special land use is that they get final site plan approval from the planning commission. However, if Mayor Protam Girba or Mayor Marl, who serve on the planning commissions, have additional conditions that they would like to add, that would be an appropriate thing to do.
Very good. Other questions for, well, actually, Mr. Girba, anything you'd like to say as the liaison of the planning commission?
Just that this application was pretty straightforward. There were no requirements for variance or such. One concern was regarding parking, but as it is in that shopping center, there is significant parking that's already in there. And in fact, probably about 10 years ago, we requested they reduce some of it on Michigan Avenue to allow for the gateway and a better attraction for that property. So there are some concerns in the future we have to look at because of maybe Mr. Harrington could mention, but the number of parking spaces that will be required for that entire shopping center based on current requirements is significant, and yet there already is significant parking there.
Just to clarify, I know we're seeing a lot of these. So 465 East Michigan Avenue is the one we heard at the last planning commission, which isn't a shop. This is the Zax car wash one, just to clarify. I know there's, they're all on Michigan Avenue, which adds the confusion of everybody here, but, so this is the Zax car wash one.
Similar one with this one, though. It had sufficient parking, and there were any requirements for a change in any variances at this time.
Good. Thank you. Questions for either myself or Mr. Girba, who serve on the planning commission, or community development director Harrington? I'll start with Mr. Del Orco.
I just had one question, as there was one dissenting vote on the planning commission before coming to approval, and that was you, Mr. Mar, Mayor Marl. So I was wondering if you could elaborate on why you had dissented with the planning commission.
It's primarily building materials and the aesthetics of the facility. I have some concerns about retrofitting a 1980s-era car wash into a retail provisioning center. And as is common during preliminary site plan, I did not see renderings on how the exterior of the building, the structure, would look. I'm confident at this point that those concerns can be alleviated during the final site plan process, and as such, I'll be voting in favor of the motion that's been moved by Girba, seconded by Kraus. But I'll still continue to emphasize, trying to make sure that that parcel, that building specifically, is made as attractive as possible, as well as being user-friendly as we make the transition from car wash into provisioning center.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Dylan?
Thank you. Mr. Harrington, just a question. I know the first question dealt with restrooms. And this seems to be an issue that's coming up quite often lately. What is our ordinance and what is our core restrooms? Is it based on type of business, number of occupants? Just to understand that.
So that actually has to do with state building code. So the building code classifies uses differently than our zoning code does, which is a good thing, I would argue, because the building code is a lot more narrow than ours is. So if there's in seating, if there's seating within the establishment, usually requires two restrooms, from my understanding, although I'd have to defer to building official MACIAG for further comment on that. But I believe they would be compliant with a single restroom. However, due to the nature of the establishment and the required security of the establishment, the developer agreed in this instance that having a second restroom would be preferred, one specifically for staff in a secured area, and one for patrons in the more open area.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Any additional questions for Mr. Harrington? Is there any subsequent discussion on the motion that's been moved by Girba, seconded by Kraus? Then we have a motion on the floor moved by Mayor Protam Girba, seconded by council member Kraus to acknowledge and to approve with conditions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to unfinished business, item 22-183, water and sewer fee waiver, Maple Oaks Court. Let's begin with a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 9th, 2022 memo from community development director Green.
So moved.
Moved to acknowledge receipt by Mayor Protam Girba.
Harrington.
Second.
Who was the second? What did I say?
You said Green again.
Oh, my goodness. It's a verbal tic. Mr. Harrington, my apologies. That was moved by Mayor Protam Girba, seconded by Kraus. Is that correct?
Dylan?
Dylan, I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. Harrington, please.
Perfect. So just to make sure we're on the water sewer fees and Maple Oaks, I got distracted with that, too.
That's right.
So upon further review of the ordinance that allowed for the waiving of the fees, we couldn't find the origins of the ordinance. I even asked former city superintendent Gary Rubel to assist in trying to track down the origins of the ordinance. We had difficulty finding that. We found some other mentions of the Brecken Village area that had a fee waived, but it was not using the same ordinance or the same classification of the ordinance. Ultimately, it doesn't appear that this is the best fit, or that it neatly fits into the ordinance. I do have some concerns over whether they're not, whether or not they're required to keep these homes available for intellectually disabled or developmentally disabled adults. The majority of their development actually is not sold to folks with those disabilities. So to me, this would appear more as a clubhouse than it would as what the ordinance was intended for, which is a common area for senior residents in specific types of facilities. However, it's broad enough that, should it be council's prerogative, you do have the ability to waive the fees.
Very good. Thank you for your follow-up on that. Questions for our community development director? None?
I just want to clarify a point in your memo. You said you're skeptical that the lower usage for the buildings will remain as low as they have been. So there's reason to believe that this is a dubious claim.
Well, I don't know if it would ever meet the use levels of a traditional unit, because it is a half-bath, and I think a kitchenette-like object in a common area. But from my understanding of the development that is built out, these are the only units that are not occupied fully yet. So
Right.
In that sense, I don't know what proportion would be adequate essentially to reduce the fee at.
Right. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Additional questions for Mr. Harrington? Okay, then we have a motion on the floor to simply acknowledge receipt of the August 9th memo. It's been moved by Girba, seconded by Dylan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, my motion carries unanimously. Now the chair would be happy to entertain a motion to approve or not to approve the waiver of fees for a reduction of $1,475.70 for water connection fee, and $3,159 for sewer connection fees, for 673 Maple Oaks Court, and waiver of fees for a reduction of $1,475.70 for water connection fees, and again, $3,159 for sewer connection fees at 621 Maple Oaks Court, or any modified motion that you deem appropriate.
Move to not approve?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Dylan to not approve, and that was seconded by Girba. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dylan, would you like to begin, or comment?
No, I am basing my decision on the recommendation of staff and their research on the topic.
Okay. Anybody else care to comment on the issue? Easy enough. I'm sorry, who had their hand up? Mr. CEO, please.
Yes, I did, Your Honor. Just a question. It's been stated in writing that there's some question about the future of this for mentally challenged people or disabled folks to use the facility exclusively. There's no way to limit that with the site plan requirement?
I don't believe so. I don't think that was necessarily an aspect of it, or a condition that was added to the approval. I know it's the intent of the development to create a subdivision effectively that's probably not the colloquial, colloquially using the term subdivision, to provide a community that would allow intellectually and developmentally disabled adults to thrive in. However, I don't know of any specific requirement imposed by the city. I don't know if there's any sort of tax benefit, et cetera, that requires them to keep these units as such, and just broader how the development itself is laid out. Like I said, I think the city manager and I would agree that it would appear to be more like a shared HOA facility clubhouse, is what we will call it, than something for the, to specifically serve the needs of those adults, like what you would see in a senior care facility.
And I just want to note, we don't, Ben and I were obviously not the parties that negotiated the development agreement for this, but I would assume that that type of language would be incorporated into the development agreement if it did exist. And we're happy to do that research if you have any specific concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? There is a motion on the floor moved by Dylan, seconded by Girba. It would be not to approve. Okay? Call for the vote, then. All those in favor of not approving say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We move on to new business, item one, which is 22-189, 2022. This is boarding commission appointment policy. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from assistant city manager Getzmann, and to approve or not to approve the 2022 boarding commission policy.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Girba to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dylan. In Ms. Getzmann's absence, city manager O'Toole, I believe you'll be commenting?
Yes. So, as you know, this is my year of policy and procedure. So one of the issues that has come out recently is just wanting to formalize what processes we do have in place for board and commission appointments. This is a first draft of that attempt. Certainly, please feel free to provide your feedback. Now, we're happy to take it back to the drawing board if there's any questions or concerns.
Very good. Mr. Girba, would you like to begin?
Just one question on vacancy. It says, "An opening on any board, whether by individual resignation or term limit restrictions." And this may be a thing you need to investigate. Which boards do we have term limits?
None.
Or none? And I didn't think so.
None.
And do we do reappointments for all our boards? Or do they have, once they're appointed, do we allow them to continue their appointments?
No, so
Except for some, I think we do.
So there is no term limit, per se, on any board or commission. There are different lengths of terms, depending on the bylaws for the various boards, or commissions, or committees. You do bring up a good point, and maybe there should be some language formalized in this policy. So when I became mayor, so we'll go back 10 years, the standard practice was essentially if Mr. Girba was a private citizen and he served on the planning commission and his term was up, we just would reappoint you.
That's what I thought.
I started a policy of every year, working with the clerk's office, and clerk Royal can attest to this, as could deputy clerk Ritchie. I contact the individual whose term is expiring, ask them if they'd like to be reappointed, and then usually ask an obligatory question, "Why would you like to be reappointed? What do you hope to contribute in the future? And what have you contributed to this board in the past?" And depending on a satisfactory answer to that, then we move forward with a reappointment.
And we are just trying to clarify whether we actually reappoint everyone every year, and I'm trying to think how we've handled that.
Well, I think it was council member Dylan who brought up, which was not a bad idea. Maybe it was council member Kraus, maybe it was both. I guess it doesn't really matter. But having people who seek reappointment fill out a subsequent form. So we have people, when Brian Marl, private citizen, wants to apply to be on the Parks Commission, he fills out a board and commission application. Besides the obligatory email questions that I ask when your term expires, we don't have people fill out a subsequent form. And maybe that would be, be a value and benefit to then share with the city council.
And I think for me, is to make sure that not do we have term limits, but because on different boards and commissions, we have, like LDFA, may you be six-year terms, I'm not exactly sure on planning, but in planning's case, you can only serve three years. There's different things in our bylaws, which we should probably clarify and make sure they're consistent among all of the different boards and commissions.
So that, yeah, you're right about that. Planning commission in particular, there's a term limit based on the officer's positions.
Right.
So you could be on planning commission for 30 years, but you can only serve three years as chair before you need to rotate off.
Right, and I think that statute, some type of things. We may want to look at that, including in the ZBA. So as you mentioned term limits, that brought up a whole lot of ideas, and I think we need to have a little clarification on that. But it may not necessarily have to be changed in this proposal that you're bringing forward at this time.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to institute term limits, that would seem to be an issue within each bylaw.
Okay. Yeah, it's just that I don't think we have to have a term limit. It's just we should have a period in time in which every three years they serve, so that we don't have somebody in perpetuity.
So a reappointment process?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, we can, I think this would be an appropriate place to describe the reappointment process.
Let me ask that question, just by a show of hands or a nod of the head. Are people in agreement that there would be benefit in developing a form that an individual would fill out at the time their term expires and they are subject to reappointment? Yeah? Okay.
We give them also an opportunity to provide input or anything at that time in a more formalized approach, and not necessarily be public.
Yep. And we'd also want to, for my benefit and for councils', we want to establish some pretty firm dates as to when that document would be provided to them.
Yeah.
So if Colleen's term is expiring at the end of 2022 for planning commission, I would think we'd want to get her that form probably sometime in November, so that she has ample time to consider her options, fill it out, return it to the city clerk and mayor for review, and then it can be forwarded to city council for consideration when annual appointments are made at the first meeting in January. Anything else, Mr. Girba?
No, and I appreciate you clarifying how background checks and such would be done. So great job on getting this as a start.
Very good. Additional questions? Ms. Dylan?
Thank you. I'll start by saying thank you, because I was the one that did bring this policy forward, that I wanted to see sort of a more formalized approach to it. One of the things that I have been asking for all along is that we, we want to engage the public onto our boards and committees. And I think a big part of that is making sure that we're advertising that we need people. We do mention it from the dais when we report out on our committees, but I think having another place in which we can do it, and having an established timeframe or such, I think would be an important aspect. If you know that, you know, John Smith is going to be If you know that, you know, John Smith is going to be leaving the Parks Commission, I feel as though we should advertise that out to the public for X amount of period of time and say, then look at all applications at the same time and then move somebody forward. I'm just afraid that if we just sort of say, "Hey, we got somebody, you know, from Parks. I know somebody that might be interested," we're kind of looking at a much smaller pool of people that way, and I think it could give us an opportunity. And I do appreciate that we keep applications on file. I mean, I think understanding, I mean, I've looked at those and, you know, people tend to pick the top three committees, and so what, you know, their first choice might be planning, but they end up on environmental. So how do you file them away? Are they really interested in environmental or are they really waiting on that planning spot to open? So kind of understanding with that form what, where their priorities actually lie as well as their expertise.
Is there a length of time that you would like to hold them?
I think that's something that this body could determine what would be adequate. Obviously, you don't want to have a board with an empty seat for a long period of time, but I don't know how we can just advertise it a little bit more. I don't know what other communities do, whether it's, you know, you advertise for seven days, 10 days, 30 days, whatever it is, and then make sure that we're looking at everything in totality.
Yeah, I think we could easily identify within this policy a period of time for which we want vacancies to be posted and applications accepted, and I think we could also create a section on the retention of applications and what period of time in which to do that.
Do you have anything further, Ms. Dillon? I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
I would be, I guess I could be inclined to support a timeframe for advertisement, but I would want that window to be pretty short. And the goal is to fill these positions, not to have vacancies linger for months at a time.
Yeah, and ideally, we would be posting as soon as we receive a resignation, so.
Correct. Go ahead, Mr. Gearbaugh.
And that reminds me, one other thing. We may need to look at alternates for some of our other committees, which we haven't identified in here as alternate appointments. We often struggle with HTC to get a full quorum, and that really is inefficient to especially the citizens coming forward.
I would probably defer, again, to the individual committee bylaws to make that change.
And some of them, because I remember asking a former city attorney about that in reference to planning commission, some might be preemptive by state law. I don't know that state law permits a municipality to appoint alternates to planning commission.
I mean, we can quiz the attorneys. We've got like a room full of them.
Yeah. I don't want to put you on the spot, but yeah, we might be, we might be limited by state statute.
Yeah.
I mean, it's interesting that ZBA has alternates, yet we don't have for HTC, and the one that we have the strongest problem with getting a quorum is HTC.
I would concur with you that anything that has that kind of like policy setting or action-taking responsibility, really, we should have an alternate because it's just a, it's a real hassle to our residents to have to work around those schedules.
So you'd recommend that as a different action?
Yeah, I would recommend, I would recommend we look at the bylaws of those individual committees or commissions and make appropriate changes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
So just to piggyback on that aspect of bylaws, this is something that we talked about a while ago and sort of standardizing those, and I don't know that it's ever kind of come back. And obviously, each committee has some of their own nuances, but we are sort of looking at getting the general gist of them all be the same so that we can, when we're making decisions like this, say, okay, it is going to, it is going to fit in with the bylaws of each of our committees.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's council's discretion, but certainly you could direct all those individual committees and commissions to look at their bylaws and...
If I may be so bold, City Manager O'Toole, and you and I chatted about this briefly after our most recent large business summit, first about using a new consultant to do our strategic planning or do consult and moderate our annual strategic planning process, but also maybe incorporating that into a board and commission retreat with all of our municipal board, commission, and committee members. And I think that would be a great opportunity if we had all those individuals in the room to say as a body, "Here are some standard things we'd like to see in each of your bylaws. Are you in agreement with that? Can we talk through it? And then subsequent to that, maybe at your next meeting, look at some modified language and approve that."
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation anyways.
I think that's, I think that's a great plan.
Okay. Anything else on this issue? Then let's do this. We'll entertain or vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt, and then I'm sure between myself, city manager, and the city clerk, we can get a revised policy for your consideration at our next regular meeting, which is, does this agenda not list our next meeting?
September 12.
September 12. Okay. So we'll do a motion to acknowledge receipt and then a motion to postpone until our next regular meeting on September 12. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Now a motion to postpone consideration of this policy until our next regular meeting on September 12, 2022.
So moved.
Moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Kamir Sulek. Any discussion? There is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item two, 22-191, Contract for Legal Services GHM. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager O'Toole and to approve or not to approve the contract for legal services with Giammarco Mullins and Horton PC as submitted. Is there a motion?
I'll acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Kraus to acknowledge and to approve. Is that seconded by Seo?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Again, City Manager O'Toole, any remarks that you'd like to share for the public's benefit?
No, I'm just, this has been a very rigorous process, and I think everyone is very pleased with the direction we're heading.
Very good. Well, I just want to state for the record again, I appreciate the dedication and service of City Manager O'Toole, Mayor Pro Tim Gearbaugh, Councilmember Dillon, and then our two additional workgroup members, which was Police Chief Radzik and Dennis Valente, former school board member and local attorney in Ann Arbor. So I think that was a well-balanced group, and from all accounts, from the conversations I've had, I had, excuse me, with many members of the workgroup, it seems like an excellent process, and you were very thoughtful and thorough. So I will be enthusiastically supporting this motion and the subsequent motion to continue our relationship with Clark Hill. There any additional comments, questions from the dais? Mr. Seo?
I just wanted to add a thanks for the fine cookies.
Who brought cookies?
John did.
What kind are they, John?
Peanut butter and chocolate.
Okay, very good.
They're here. I'm just going to leave them.
You're going to leave them? Okay. All right. Ms. Dillon, did you have a question or comment?
I do. I just have a quick question for Ms. O'Toole. Do we need to add our NDO clause into our contracts? I thought we were supposed to add that.
Our, oh, our, yes. Is that our nondiscrimination ordinance?
Yes.
It's not a problem. I can change it.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think there's any objection.
Ms. Dillon is correct. That's supposed to be sort of our standard practice to incorporate that language into contracts and documents. So unless there's objection from the dais, that language will be included without objection. And I'm assuming, gentlemen, you're fine with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Thank you for catching that, Councilmember Dillon. Any additional questions or comments for staff? Any discussion on the motion? It's been properly moved by Kraus, seconded by Seo, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, gentlemen. Look forward to working with you.
Thanks, guys.
We move on to new business item three, 22-197, Contract for Legal Services Clark Hill. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager O'Toole and to approve or not approve contract for legal services with Clark Hill as submitted.
So moved.
To acknowledge and to approve, Mr. Seo?
To acknowledge and approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamir Sulek. Again, City Manager O'Toole, any comments for the record?
Nothing additional.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the dais? Any discussion on the motion?
Just make sure, NDO for the same thing.
Yes.
Assuming there's no objection. Nancy? Okay. Very good. That language will be included without objection. If there's nothing further, all those in favor of acknowledging and approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Nancy, look forward to continuing to work with you. We move on to new business item four, 22-194, Proposed Ordinance Number 836, Sign Regulations. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated July 20, 2022, from Deputy Clerk Ritchie and to adopt or not to adopt Ordinance Number 836, Sign Regulations.
Move to acknowledge and adopt.
Moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge and to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamir Sulek. Mr. Harrington, would you like to comment?
Sure. Most of these changes were made prior to my arrival. From my understanding, it was at the discretion of the previous attorney or legal counsel to update it in regards to some recent Supreme Court cases. I don't believe anything other, anything notably substantive or changes that we were policy-oriented to begin with were made, other than to bring our signed ordinance into compliance with Supreme Court rulings.
Very good. This item has been discussed on numerous occasions at the planning commission level. Mr. Gearbaugh, is there anything you'd like to add for the record?
Just that part of the thing that this was delayed for almost a year was due to the Supreme Court case that Mr. Harrington was mentioning. It was due to the fact that content and the ability to advertise for businesses off-site of that, say you wanted to put a sign up for another business that was somewhere else in town on your property, that was ruled that could be upheld, that you do not have the, we can zone, and we can also put it as an ordinance, that you cannot advertise another business that's on another part of town. And the other one was, of course, freedom of expression and making sure that whatever we allow on a signage or provide does not violate that. And mainly, the other changes, we're putting in, some changes in the type of signs, banner signs, the vertical banner signs, which are very distracting. Those are being basically not allowed any longer. And the other part of it was putting in term limits in terms of the, how many times you can put a sign up and how long a temporary sign can be out there. We never really had that in place, so every two weeks you could get a new permit and put it up.
Very good. Thank you for that synopsis. Questions for staff or planning, or planning commission rep? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. There was something that we had done in ordinance that we had revised, and it was very specific to Celine Main Street in the projection, and it is still carved out in this document. And it was projecting from one building to another, and it's under Section 3F, and it's on page 88 of the package.
Can you, I'm sorry to interrupt. For Mr. Harrington's benefit, because his tenure would, well, he has not been here to see one of the, I don't even know what the hell you'd call it, excuse me, the visual signs that Celine Main Street does. Do you want to explain that to him?
Yes. Celine Main Street has projectors. They have a projector that was mounted on top of the Max Building that projected above onto the top side of Brecken Grille, onto that roof building.
It's the idea of projecting signs or Christmas or designs on buildings as...
And I think they have others.
This is Happy Holidays.
So what I want to be cognizant of is that we're projecting across property onto other property. And in the instance of the one downtown, there are now windows that they're projecting into. And so I don't know how we address that from both sides of the issue, meaning that we're going to, okay, we're going to allow it, but how do we not have it become a nuisance? And where does that piece come into play?
There are certain lumens standards that are required to be met. I'm not, I'm still learning the ropes of our sign code, which has a bunch of weird carve-outs and nuances to it. So I'm sure this issue will be brought back to you within my tenure because I am rather specific with what I would like to see myself, and I think that you would find that to be a more amenable way to approach signage in general. It's definitely an issue that I'm happy to look into and figure out what grounds there are for projecting signs. I'm definitely not a fan of animated signs, so if the, if the projection is moving, that becomes a whole other issue in and of itself. But I would defer to City Manager O'Toole if you have any. I'm not familiar with the sign that you're talking about.
This sign that I'm talking to does not move. It is a, it's a still image.
It's like snowflakes and a reindeer, and it says like Happy Holidays.
It's a season greeting.
Season greetings.
One of the hang-ups with it was that MDOT won't allow it to be broadcast across Michigan Avenue because they don't want to worry about distractions with traffic and so forth. But according to this, the owner of the building to which the projection is being applied must provide approval.
Okay.
So in the example that Ms. Dillon's mentioning, if there are tenants and it's shining in their windows and they object, the builder, the owner of that building could say no.
Right.
And that's how we handle it now currently.
That's how I would also handle any sort of property dispute, is if you had a signed letter from the property owner, you could do it indefinitely until a future property owner or the property owner themselves no longer provides permission for it.
So I have two other quick questions. One is about on lighting, which is, at one point, I think we just addressed everything as neon lighting. Have we updated that because now, nothing is really neon anymore. Now it's all LED, which doesn't fall under neon, so that's how people have been able to put up those types of lights around buildings. And obviously, it's not a problem we have to solve now, but I know that that was sort of a sticking point for, at one point. The other thing about signs that I want to clarify is, are businesses allowed to put up signs advertising other businesses, other products?
So from my understanding, we can regulate commercial activity, commercial activity messages on signage. So there's a Supreme Court issue bundled up in there. So commercial activity is a very broad term. So if they're advertising other businesses and products, it's subject to our ordinance on off-site signs, unless that product was on their, was sold at their store, at which case it would still be a caveat, a carve-out for temporary signage too, because they're likely putting that in a yardstick. You are allowed to have window signs so long as it doesn't cover 25% of your windows. Theoretically, people could slap in various numbers of signs in their window advertising products on their store. So think of like a liquor store that has like a Bacardi or a Miller Lite sticker in their window. Those would be permitted so long as they don't cover 25% or more of the window. As for the neon question, Part 5 of Section 1204, ground signs, as it relates to lighting, they are subject to our standards with Section 709(c)(2), but I would have to look at specifically what our lighting standards are in that section to provide you a better answer. But you are right, we do have, we did retain the specific caveat for neon signage, but that's obviously an issue that's somewhat outdated at this point and deserves to be readdressed. Like I said, I'll probably bring a signage issue or three or five to you in the coming months and years, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Ms. Gearbaugh?
And that kind of addresses the issue with holiday lighting, which ends up being drawn out all year long, and whether or not that is becoming more of an advertising aspect versus that. But I think we have something involved in that. The other example that Ms. Dillon was mentioning, we have, we have businesses that do outline their windows with significantly bright LED lights that are quite distracting or seem inappropriate in terms of what we would want, in terms of adequate lighting and so forth.
For an enforcement standpoint, I can tell you that we could measure the lumens. It gets kind of difficult, because it becomes an after-hours investigation, as we're not usually here when it's dark enough to measure the lumens adequately. Lighting is a part of the site plan procedure, though, so there is some grounds, we could make an argument that they're not adequately following their site plan due to the additional lighting that they provided, or they're now providing, that was not mentioned previously in the site plan. So there, there is some grounding to kind of right in that issue, but I agree, we don't want Christmas lights hung every year round. It's, it's not a good look, I would say, unless we were trying to go with the Frankenmuth route, and then more power to us, so.
And, and as, what we've seen is a number of businesses are trying to be more energy efficient and replacing with LEDs, but the LEDs are significantly brighter than what was originally approved in the preliminary site plan. So I think that'll be part of our site plan review, though. So, thank you.
There are ways to dim LED lights, too, so I don't think it's a, a reasonable ask by city staff to make sure that, that it's not breaking a glare or lighting standard that we currently have. And I'm happy to investigate that further and figure out what those specifically are, and would an LED light breach the number of lumens that we previously allowed?
I can't imagine our building department has a device that measures lumens that you go around and do this with.
We actually do, they're not that expensive, so.
Oh, okay.
You'd be surprised. Pretty much every building and coat department have a lumen reader, so.
Oh, wow, okay.
Anything else for Mr. Harrington or staff? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? There we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Kamir Sulek to acknowledge and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Isaiah, have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 5, 22-193, Public Participation Policy. This will be motion to acknowledge receipt of the public participation policy and to approve or not to approve as submitted.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Gearbaugh to simply acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dillon. City Clerk Royal?
Yes, as part of
Pull that a little bit closer to you, Terry, I'm sorry.
As part of City Manager O'Toole's policy-driven triumph. This is being brought to you, and this, this is bringing you a little more, it gives a little more clarity of when public comments are going to be made, the length of the comments and written comments. This also stops comments coming into the city clerk at 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. That way, I'm not trying to check my email during the meeting. So it gives a little consistency to everybody, and that way, they know that when the cutoff is.
And I'm sorry I didn't bring this forward earlier, but I guess there's a question for you and the city manager. Is the language clear enough and tight enough? One thing that's always bothered me is we still have certain boards and commissions that use language that say something to the effect of, we've now reached our public comment period, citizens are encouraged to come forward, and the time and duration of the public comments will be, can be limited by, by this body. I think it should just be three minutes across the board. We should make sure every board, commission, committee uses that same language.
So the way that this policy is currently written is geared more specifically to the city council. It'd be easy enough for us to change the in-person comment section and make it clear that that is the consistent rule for all Open Meetings Act subject boards and commissions.
Would anybody object to that? No? Okay. Then I would work to add that language.
Absolutely. And one other thing I'll note, I mean, really, the in-person comment section is reminiscent of our requirements under the Open Meetings Act, whereas the written comment period is something that we do to go above and beyond. So there's certainly more discretion on the rules with that one.
Right, okay. Fair enough. Ms. Gearbaugh?
Just my clarification is social media, because we had been taking comments from Facebook or from YouTube, and that we need to clearly address that we will not do that, or however you want to word it properly.
Yeah, I mean, the way that it's currently written in this policy is that the only form of written comment we will take is an email to the city clerk or deputy clerk.
Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. So that brings up what my question was, which is, would it be in the better interest to have a designated public comment email address? That if the clerk is not here, that you have access to, or that, because I don't want to put something out there that's going to confuse people that now think that they can come and write in a comment on Parks Commission or HDC and such. So I just want to make sure that we figure out how we can pull in and make and understand, so are we only allowing written comments for city council? Are we going to kind of bring that out across the board? But I think understanding where those comments live and how they are preserved.
So the, with, the policy is written again, is written comments would only be accepted by city council. We're, we're not looking to expand post-COVID to all committees and commissions now accepting written comments. We do make reference to the fact that this is a privilege and not a right that we're extending by this policy again. You know, we're meeting all of our statutory requirements, but we are going above and beyond to allow this additional means of communication. So, you know, whether, whether we want a separate email address, or it just goes to the clerk, or in the clerk's absence, the deputy clerk, I think at the end of the day, this really gets just recorded into the public record when it is a written statement. And we make it clear that, you know, if there's any errors or omissions or oversights on the part of staff in, in missing a message, there's, there's no real, the city has still done its due diligence to make that option available.
Okay. I guess that's where, I'm just trying to figure out, so now what happens should Ms. Royal's email be disabled at some point? Are you going to pull all of those and have them stored somewhere else? It just seems like if there was a separate email, like a public comment at City of Celine, that's going to live on in perpetuity, no matter who is the city clerk.
It's our Eagle problem. Remember with Eagle?
I can't, I can't have separate emails for everything, guys. Dean, Dean already requested this week a separate email address for something else, so it's a, clearly you two are talking to each other again.
No, I didn't, this was Eagle, remember? That was requested by our members from the staff, but similar type of situation.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't see an issue with us creating a separate email. It's, you know, I'm sure it's easy enough to just auto-forward it to whoever the clerk is at the time, but realistically, where this information is going to live is on our city website, which would be updated with the appropriate contact information.
I think the problem that you would run into is if it gives you another place you have to look, and there's always a bigger chance of missing it. So like, I have my emails open all day, so I see what's here. If I'm gone, I automatically forward my emails to Katrina Ritchie, Deputy Clerk. So if we do a new email for just clerk at City of Celine, it's another step of, you'd have to remember to open it up and move along.
Just to add to the consequences, an issue we've had with permitting too, actually, is what happens when our permit tech is gone? Where do the permits go? So I think we've talked about creating a second email with just like permits@cityofceline.org, or we could do public comment@cityofceline.org, and then have them forwarded to that specific person, but then have like a backdoor office 365 access for when that person is gone. So I wouldn't be inundated with permit emails, and you wouldn't be inundated with public comment emails, but then when that person is gone, we have a place that we can always check to see, unless they would automatically just forward to you when you're there. So permits would automatically forward to the permit tech, comments would automatically forward to you, but if you were absent for whatever reason, then we have another way to access that specific account. But I think that has to, Chris Schon would be the person to answer those questions for us.
And then I just wanted to make mention, it does say here that the city may choose to read the written comment aloud, but is not obligated to do so. But aren't we obligated at that point? Because we're offering it as public comment, so it has to be read into the record.
So, and I'm, again, I don't want to put Attorney Muller on the spot, but our previous, our outgoing legal counsel did review this and felt, again, that we were going above and beyond by offering a written comment period. And if there was content in that message that was deemed threatening or inappropriate, we could make a judgment call not to read it. It would still go into the public record and the agenda packet as a comment, but it does not, we do not have an obligation to read it out loud.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't have the document in front of me. This also would permit, we're going to allow somebody to email in a comment. There have been occasions during my tenure, specifically with HOAs or condo associations, where they actually type up a letter and deliver it. So I would be of the opinion that if we're going to allow email comments to be read into the record, we should also allow formally submitted written comments from individuals or organizations in our community.
But we still have the option to not read it.
With the way the policy currently reads, correct.
And they're still held to the three-minute comment period for the policy.
Yep. But there's nothing to permit, if they wrote a bombastic letter, I don't mean to be prejudiced, while we would only permit three minutes of that to be read, the document in its totality could be included in the record.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else for the city clerk, or? Yes?
Just on that, so if somebody writes an extra-long letter, you just said it would still be into the public record, so it's kind of like a backdoor way of them having more time. I was wondering if we should put like, or a, a letter limit or a word limit? Because if it's, if it's too long to be read, but we're still allowing it to be a part of the public record, that's allowing someone else who writes in to get more words to us, to get more information. I don't, I don't, I don't like that either. Like maybe, what's three minutes if you're talking really fast? Like maybe three minutes without, you know what I'm saying? They could write a 10-page letter, and you're saying it could still be allowed in public record?
Well, it's just, generally, what would happen, I would think, if somebody submitted a, a, a written letter, is that that letter would be copied and then provided to each of you in the packet. And then a portion of that would be read, however much you can get through in three minutes.
I'm just saying, if they showed up at the end of three minutes, we're already affording them something that we don't have to, and now we're letting them even give us more information as a pub, as part of the public record. Something to consider.
Yeah. Play around with the provision.
Yeah.
I would recommend with this, obviously, we'll move to acknowledge receipt and then also postpone to a date certain, which would be September the 12th. One last comment, Ms. Gearbaugh.
Yeah, the one question on this one, though, is if a letter comes at 3:30, we would anticipate, we would take that into our, we would have it at our meeting. How exactly do we get, are we going to attach that to the minutes and then put them online? That's the issue with that, we don't currently do that.
No, we would put it in with the packet. We keep the packet online, so.
So you would modify the packet after the meeting?
I would modify the packet, yes.
Add those minutes in?
But I would not add them to the minutes, no.
Just like these documents.
Okay. No, that's fine. I just want to make sure, and then, because again, we have that issue of how to identify that.
Unless you want it done differently. I mean, it would still say on the minutes that we received a letter from somebody, you know, a written comments were received by somebody, but those comments would be put in the packet, not in the minutes.
Just for me, it continues to be that issue of changing the packet after the meeting.
I know.
And not necessarily, and it's like, I just want to clarify that we're okay with doing that from a perspective of the official, I think the official document is our minutes.
Right, yes.
The package can then be modified, but just a way to identify that these were added afterwards. And I think you put a date on those now, so we would be able to identify correctly. And I appreciate the new minutes and the way it's being done online. It was kind of a interesting clicking on the link and being able to go right to the document, so glad that we can do that. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge receipt of the policy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Isaiah, have it. The motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to postpone to a date certain of September the 12th?
So moved.
Moved by Kraus, seconded by Gearbaugh. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Isaiah, have it. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. We move on to new business item 6, 22-196, purchase of play equipment. This will be a motion to acknowledge, to approve or not to approve a budget amendment to line item 101-900-985-012 from $15,000 to $20,053, and to approve or not to approve the purchase of play equipment from We Build Fund in the amount of $20,052.84.
Move for approve and approve.
Moved by CO to approve and approve.
Second.
Seconded by Kamir Sulek. Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, you want to, you could use the microphone at the table or you can come to the podium, whatever your preference.
I'm old school.
It's all right. All good. Don't trip.
Something, something.
There's nothing there.
There's nothing. Just me. Sorry about that. Yeah, so we had in our budget scheduled to replace the play structure at Marple Park, which has outused its lifespan. And when we got the quotes just recently in July, rates are higher than, than what we anticipated back in January when we did the budget. And so I'm, I'm just approving a, just a line item change to increase that dollar figure by a little over $5,000. The project would be, if approved tonight, will be ordered. We're still on kind of a long time delay for, to receive the, the equipment. My guess is it wouldn't be until next spring, until it would be actually replaced and installed, unless something happens and we get it earlier, which would be great. But yeah, so we're, we're asking for a budget amendment and then approval for purchase.
Can you remind me and the public, the existing play equipment that's at Marple Park dates back to approximately what year?
1999.
Okay. All right. So very much on par with the equipment we recently replaced at Curtis Park, which has about a 20-year lifespan.
Correct.
Very good. I'm fully in support of this. Marple Park is a very nice little neighborhood park, and I think it's well-used by the children in that vicinity. Are there questions for Parks and Rec Director Scruggs? Mr. Gearbaugh?
What do we anticipate the $5,000 coming from FIFA funds or just out of?
I, I think at this point, we're just waiting to see if it could be re-appropriated from different lines based on spending.
Okay.
It's not in the FIFA district.
It isn't?
No.
That one isn't?
I was checking on that today.
Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Thank you. What equipment is currently there that will be replaced, and what is being replaced with?
The play structure that's currently there. It's like a tot climbing structure, based mostly for like two-to-five-year-olds, and it would be the same kind of replacement of that, but upgraded equipment and things like that. So it's like a one-for-one.
Okay. Now, in your master planning and all of your other surveying, do we know that that's the age group that we want to target in that particular area? I mean, have those two-to-five-year-olds grown up and now they're 10-to-15-year-olds, and so they want something different? I guess I'm just trying to understand what we have and what we're, what we're putting in and make sure that it matches the demographic.
Sure, yeah. So as you might know, Marple Park is designated a tot lot. It's basically a, just a house, you know, like a lot between two homes. Yeah, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a house lot. And so it's not designed for any elaborate, large pieces of equipment. The footprint of the, of that area is very small. It's a tot lot. And so this equipment definitely is appropriate for that space. The, the demographics of that neighborhood have changed over the years. You know, it was, it was fairly young, then, you know, a lot of those kids have, have, you know, grown, and a lot of people are empty nesters now, moving out of the area, but we're starting to get some more younger people into that area. I think it's a very appropriate kind of one-for-one swap out of, of that equipment. You know, I don't, I don't see any other, any other equipment going back in there. We are, we have some swings, we have the climbing area, we have some benches and like a, I think it's an S-shaped, like balance beam type thing, but it's not a real active park. Yeah.
And so you said that the current structure is unsafe. So is that being removed now?
Not yet.
Or do you have to wait?
It's, it's unsafe in that we can't get any replacement parts. We have some of that plastic delaminating from the metal. I don't know if you're familiar with some of the climbing structures now, rather than just all plastic. It's like a, a plastic coating over metal, so some of that's starting to delaminate. It's not, I mean, it, it, it needs to be replaced. It, it's outlived its, its lifespan, basically.
But it's not unsafe?
Not unsafe.
Children can continue to play on it until it is removed?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Kamir Sulek?
Yes. I, I would, I would agree, since I live close to there and remember my kids going there. As the kids get older, they go to Pleasant, they go to Pleasant Ridge on that playground equipment. And it, surprisingly, it still looks pretty good at Marple Park, but I, I certainly agree with it being changed now. My real question is, so the old equipment is being disposed of in, in reading this. Where is it being disposed, and is there any, any value to the metal or anything that we recoup?
I'm not sure about the value of any metal. You cannot reuse play equipment. Like you couldn't remove it and then put it somewhere else. It's, you, you can't do that.
Right, but like scrap?
Yeah, scrap potentially. I'm not sure of the value. But, you know, as, as it's removed, we have the option to let them take it, or we can, we can try to scrap it. I think at the yard, there's a big dumpster with metal that, that they collect over the years, and once it gets full, then it's taken for scrap.
So if we take it, we, it's ensured that it's
It would, it would go into the, into that scrap collection.
That it's being taken to the appropriate recycling.
Okay. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Director Scruggs? Any discussion on the motion? There we have a motion on the floor moved by CO, seconded by Kamir Sulek to approve and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Isaiah, have it. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Director Scruggs. We move on to new business item, item 7, 22-199, wastewater treatment plant design peak study. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the August 10, 2022 memo from City Engineer Humphris, and to approve or not to approve OHM's proposed proposal dated August the 9, 2022, for evaluation of design of peak flow and equalization based on storage at the wastewater treatment plant.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you by Mayor, thank you Mayor Protim Gearbaugh. He's moved to acknowledge and approve. Who's the second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kamir Sulek. Thank you very much. City Engineer Humphris, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm here tonight again. Marcus McNamara with OHM is, is here with me tonight, and I, I'm here to talk about our sanitary sewer system just for a minute. sanitary sewer system just for a minute. Since I started here a little over, I guess, almost eight months ago now, I think you're all aware that our sewer system is one of our biggest needs right now as far as infrastructure needs, not just the collection system, but the wastewater treatment plan itself. I've, I estimate over a hundred million dollars in need there. I mean, obviously, the wastewater treatment plant that we've talked about for a couple of years here is, is one of the greatest components of that. When I look back at all the studies that we've done getting ready for this, all of our peak flow analysis is, is based off of, of the metering event we did in twenty-seventeen. We did a little subsequent metering in twenty-nineteen, but most of the data to get our peak flow. And the peak flow is the requirement of Eagle, the state, of what we need to design our system to for capacity. And you can't go, you don't grab your peak flow, you don't see a twenty-four hour, twenty-five year, twenty-four hour design storm every day. So you're, you're projecting this in a model. And we went out and monitored the system in twenty-seventeen and then projected all of our capacity needs per a model. And I am recommending before we go spend eighty to a hundred million dollars that we really nail down the capacity required in our system. I first saw this a little bit in East Belt. We, we over, I don't want to say over, we were reducing that scope to what is absolutely needed for capacity and not what is maybe more of a want because we only have, we have a lot of needs right now and we want to use our money to address our absolute needs. So I'm recommending that we move forward with this as the next step to analyze what the peak flow capacity, this is like a first step. And if this proves, if our idea proves right, we would then recommend additional going back to Eagle and reducing some of that. So this is like, just to get the ball rolling.
Very important initiative and probably well overdue. Mr. McNamara, we appreciate you being here. Is there anything you'd like to add for the record at this time?
No.
No? Hang tight, just in the event that there are questions. City Manager O'Toole, anything you'd like to add before we open up for questions?
No, just that I sincerely appreciate all the thought and attention that Engineer Humphries has paid to this matter coming into it. I really think that she has taken ownership of the city's distribution and collection systems in a, in a way that maybe has not historically been done to the detail that we would have liked to seen.
Very good. Mr. Gearball, as the council liaison to the wastewater water treatment ad hoc committee, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think we've discussed this and it's one way that we need to make sure that we have all our, our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, but I think if this is the possibility of adjusting the cost and being able to actually meet our needs, it's just another piece of the pie which will help us assess what we do finally in the, in the long run, whether this or some other options.
Very good. Questions for staff or Mr. Gearball, but probably more appropriate to direct most of your inquiries to City Engineer Humphries. Mr. Kamira Sulak.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Humphries. This is definitely best practices. How long does it take to compile this data and, and determine the sizing that we need?
So this is, what we're doing with this is, is trying to do a first look to, to verify some assumptions that we have. So we're anticipating this will take about eight weeks. We'll have a report back from OHM. What we're doing is taking the last five years' worth of data at the wastewater treatment plant and doing a very miniature model based on that, just to verify some of our assumptions going into this. So in eight weeks, I think we will, we will have the results of that and I'm assuming if it goes as we assume, a recommendation to move forward with additional metering and monitoring. So eight weeks to get our first kind of quick look at it and then more to come.
Okay.
And I envision a presentation actually when we come back too. So right now, you know, we have a lot of ideas, I don't want to say, you know, but I, but we'll come back with some, we actually have done this, we'll have some, we've done the study, we'll have some results to show you with the presentation. So I'm guessing August, September, October.
Okay. And included in the assumptions, is there an increase as far as looking in, since all the data is from the past, does that model include looking at an increase moving forward as we're seeing, you know, larger amount of rainfall and, and that we would need maybe a little bit higher capacity? I don't know how that works, but?
I think you have a couple of questions in there and one, so one with the higher frequency of the rainfall events. That's absolutely, that's a known with, that's, we are getting more frequent, so a twenty-five year storm no longer occurs once every twenty-five years, but that's still the design criteria. Now, will we, I, I think that yes, we ultimately will do more metering to hopefully reduce our capacity requirements. Right now, we have X capacity based on the metering that was done in the model that we have. I'm basically proposing that we revamp that a little bit to revise our max flow. For instance, in twenty-seventeen when we did the, the metering, it was a really wet year. And so we have super conservative data. So the data was already, it was already wet when it rained and then we, we extrapolated that up. And so I'm hoping that we can cut that down a little bit and this, but this to answer your, we're looking back in time because that's the easiest thing to do without going sticking a bunch of meters in the ground. So looking back in time where you can hopefully decrease that peak that was identified in twenty-nineteen to then say, yes, we want to spend more money now to, to look at the rest of the system. So that's why we're doing this kind of look back, just to get a quick look of this modeling technique will actually reduce down that peak that was identified four or five years ago.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that and I have, I have a better understanding of it now. Thanks.
Very good. Let me jump to Mr. Gearball and then Councilmember Dillon.
Well, you mentioned in here there, we're also looking at the West Belt collection side. Is there any need to look at the Central Belt at this time? I know we've already addressed East Belt.
Well, so in fact, right now, our, our, our plan that we have submitted to the state has about three thousand feet of sanitary sewer replacement in the East Belt, ten thousand, three thousand feet in East Belt, ten thousand linear feet in West Belt. And so East Belt, keep in mind, right now is about an eight million dollar project. So you, three times that to West Belt, you can, I mean, so that's where mine, getting the, and, and, and our plan right now to the state has about ten thousand feet in Central Belt for the future. Like, so we haven't even committed to that yet, but we're still saying that's needed. I actually think the Central Belt one is, that's pretty grown out. That's what's nice about Central Belt is that it's a?
It's a lot.
Yeah, and we don't, and luckily, we don't have, like, we don't have a lot of backups and such there. So I'm hoping that that will go away ultimately with modeling and we won't need these ultimate improvements in Central. But right now, as far as our plans to the state, we've got twenty-five thousand linear feet of sanitary sewer replacement per the capacity identified in this, which is a lot of sewer replacements. It's a, keep in mind, it's a combination of both of this I and I and growth, so growth is a portion of part of this, but what I, what we can definitely zero in on is the I and I. That's something I think we can do better at.
No, I'm glad that, because we've had those concerns and so I just didn't know if that one had to be part of this.
But no, absolutely, yeah, Central Belt should, and I'm hoping that that will ultimately come down because that's like our, in the future, still like a big commitment right now that's still hanging out there.
Unless we do some major construction or allow a whole much more capacity in terms of housing or something, that would be a thing that?
Right, yes, yeah.
Councilmember Dillon?
Thank you. So just for better understanding, is this project sort of what I will call back of the house? We've got consultants doing it. Is there anything that's going to impact citizens, the community while they're doing this?
No, yeah, this is, right now, it's purely a paper study and yes, so no, citizens won't even know that we're doing this, but it, but yes, a potential next phase would be more out in the collection system, setting meters. Even that is not really disruptive to, to citizens too much, but no, this is paper study and presentation coming back in a couple of months.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for our city engineer or, or other members of staff? There appears to be none. Thank you, Tasha.
Thank you.
Any subsequent discussion on the motion? We have a motion on the floor then moved by Gearball, seconded by Kamira Sulak to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. I say have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to our last action item of the evening, which is number eight, twenty-two dash two hundred, proposal for Celine Pump Station Environmental Assessment Services. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the proposal for Part Five A Environmental Assessment Services in the amount of twenty-two thousand with ASTI Environmental and to amend or not to amend the budget line item five ninety dash five thirty-six dash eight oh seven dash zero three zero accordingly.
Move to approve and amend.
Moved by CO to approve and amend. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, I'll get you on the next one, Councilmember Kraus. I'll let Gearball be the second on that. This one was added at the last minute, but in a conversation that City Manager I had today, this is time sensitive and we ought not to, to wait a month till, to our next meeting. So City Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As you are aware, we were conditionally awarded a five hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollar federal appropriation under, that will ultimately be awarded under U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development through their community facilities programs. And part of that means complying with HUD's requirements inclusive of those environmental reviews. They are rather detailed processes and do require specialized support. There is some opportunity occasionally to have, you know, a county support with this, but in this particular instance, we were told that the county has backed up about five to six months on performing this type of work. And considering the timeline that we have to expend the funds and the fact that we've already identified a contractor for this project, we'd like to expedite that and move forward with completion. So what we have is a proposal from ASTI to perform that work and assist us with completing those grant requirements.
Very good. And thank you, Council, for your flexibility in allowing us to add this at the eleventh hour. Are there questions for the city manager? No? Ms. Dillon?
Just really quickly, it seems like everything comes out of the sewer fund.
Well, this, I mean, this is a sewer project, so that's where it needs to come out of.
No, absolutely. And it just said though, I mean, it's, it's a small dollar amount, but it was not a budgeted item.
Correct.
And so I guess just sort of understanding where we are with that fund at some point would, would be very helpful as to, you know, it seems like we keep kind of dipping into it for, for things that are not necessarily budgeted but are necessary and just understanding where that puts us kind of bottom line at some point.
Sure. Yeah, I, I can work with City Treasurer Cole and, and see about getting kind of an updated budget versus actual on the sewer fund.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Additional questions for the city manager? Mr. Gearball?
Just clarify, this is, we have to spend twenty-two thousand to get six hundred thousand.
Correct.
Nailed it.
Thank you.
Anything further? Any discussion on the motion? It's been properly moved by CO, seconded by Mayor Protim Gearball to approve and to amend. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. I say have it, the motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. I don't know why these got flipped, that's my mistake. We're starting with Commission Committee and Task Force reports. I'll begin to my left and end to my right. Mr. Del Orco, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Not at this time. Committees meet next week.
Very good. Mr. Gearball?
Planning Commission met last week to discuss, oh no, we postponed the other marijuana application on the west side of Michigan, on West Michigan Avenue, and that'll come back at our next Planning Commission meeting. And Risk Management met again to discuss some other concerns. I will be drafting a letter to the Commission, or, or Council regarding the group that we want to extend it out a little bit longer to address some other issues that have come about and really to more clarify where we think there's some concerns related to infrastructure and fire department and such. So those will be, that will be coming to you in the next meeting.
Very good. Councilmember Dillon, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
The Historic District Commission met for its monthly meeting. We have actually had a full agenda every meeting as of the last several months. And we appreciate, continue to appreciate our partnership with the community and them understanding that we're working together on things. The one thing that people do need to understand is that if you are in a historic, you cannot just go to building apartment. And so they are going to flip you to HDC and vice versa. After HDC, you still have to get your proper permits to continue forward. As far as the Cable Commission, we will be meeting next week for our monthly meeting and we are looking forward to discussing purchase of our upgraded items for in this room. We'll have additional television screens, some microphone changes, dayish changes, things like that. So we're looking forward to that coming forward.
Very good. Mr. CO, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Yes, Your Honor. Last Thursday, August the eleventh, the Cemetery Board met. We'll be coming forward with two recommendations for approval at the next council meeting. First, the American Legion came to us citing a, an old law that allows them to request the city pay for the American flags and the veterans' medallions that they affix to tombstones in our cemetery. We have over four hundred and eighty veterans buried in our city cemetery and some of those flags, as a matter of fact, most of the flags will need to be replaced next year before Memorial Day. And I think there are four or so of those veterans' medallions that need to be placed. So they'll be coming with a request for council to approve expenditure of, I think, somewhere between four hundred and a thousand dollars next year for those items. The second issue is a request of council to approve that Flesen Van de Brink begin work to provide us with a quote to replace the wooden retaining wall on the inside of the cemetery that borders Michigan Avenue and on the Monroe Street side, the masonry wall that borders Monroe Street. There apparently be some significant work need to be done by Flesen Van de Brink to bring us an appropriate quote for the repair of those two items.
Very good. Thank you. We'll look forward to those that are April, or are April, September twelfth meeting. Thank you, Mr. CO. Mr. Kamira Sulak, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
No, only that the Youth Council is meeting tomorrow, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kraus?
Thank you, yes. The Healthcare Task Force meets next Monday, but we are going to start working on our report to council, which will be in September. We're also going to be staffing at the farmer's market to, to continue to get surveys and engage with the public. And then I will be requesting this body to make the task force into a committee. There's a lot of work to be done still and I think if it's a permanent committee, we won't be caught, as caught off guard next time when we take a look and see, oh, we've lost a lot of healthcare. And then they continue the work that we've already started. We are continuing to talk with a couple of different healthcare organizations, but it's slow-moving, so. Arts and Culture meets Wednesday and that's all I have.
Very good. Okay. Then let's transition to reports and other announcements. Mr. Del Orco, do you have any?
I have none.
Mr. Gearball?
I just want to thank our community, the, we had our yard sale, which is our annual fundraiser for the Celine Area Historical Society at Renshler Farm this past weekend. We had over two thousand visitors, which is about a ten percent increase over last year. It seems that that event is really a draw and it starts out the whole yard sales for US twelve. I really appreciate all the individuals that came out and assisted with our, our own little sales and some of the other events based at the gate and the gift shop and the salvage barn. Our own city manager, Ms. O'Toole, came out, Councilmember Dillon, and even our mayor was out to help sell. He sold a five-dollar bed, metal bed that's been there for years, so good job.
Carried it out to the woman's car, so did my part.
And thank you all for assisting. I appreciate it.
Great event. Thank you for, to the Historic Society for hosting that. I think I forgot to send an email today, but I got a message from Anna Britnell at Celine Area Schools and she wanted to invite everyone on city council and the community to the ice cream social event, which will be hosted at the Weber Bliss One Room Schoolhouse this Sunday. She's also hoping to organize some competitions, some festive and fun competition between Celine City Council and School Board. So I will email you the, the link and the information tomorrow and if your schedules permit, I hope you'll attend. Councilmember Dillon, you gonna come?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm down for that challenge.
It's a spelling bee. It's a spelling bee.
It's a spelling bee, maybe like a beanbag toss?
I, I thought an ice cream. It was an ice cream contest.
Oh, eating contest, yeah.
Yeah.
A watermelon, okay.
Maybe I'll challenge them back, but it's gotta have ice cream.
Somebody else can, can do the spelling bee. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna politely decline. Councilmember Dillon, any reports or announcements?
Nothing further.
Mr. CO?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Kamira Sulak?
I'm up for the beanbag.
Okay.
But not the spelling bee.
All right, fair enough. Councilmember Kraus?
No.
Okay. City Manager O'Toole, did you want to give a brief update on where we are with the ethics policy?
Certainly. So following our last discussion, we did make some changes to the latest draft of this document. So you'll see in the definition section, we removed that reference to appointed and clarified better, what the definition of an elected official is underneath the section Underneath the Section 2-1, we made direct reference to state statute, though there is a question from that. Attorney Mullet was asking whether it is our intent to prohibit private gains based on a member of public office regardless of the gain or whether we just specifically wanted to reference that statute, because we do have that discretion. And right now, right now, with the change, it's just written as referencing that statute. There was also the note under Section 2-5, clarifying again that this body would not be responsible for investigating claims of campaign finance laws or violations. Those would be immediately referred to prosecution if any of those matters were to arise. And then in Section 2-8, there is not a requirement that it needs to be a two-thirds vote, it would be council's discretion, whether they wanted it to be a simple majority or not. On the question in 2-11 on annual disclosures, Attorney Mullet did clarify that yes, any business with the city pulling a permit or license would need to be disclosed if it's a property that you have an interest in. And then I believe, finally, just in the section on the actual Board of Ethics, making it clear that all three members would be appointed by the city manager with approval of this body, and then some clarification on the timelines for filing those complaints in Sections 3-5 and 3-7.
So what I'd like to propose is this, if you have questions or comments tonight, Chair would be happy to entertain those. I would ask that any modified language or suggestions be submitted to the city manager's office no later than August 31st, which gives you a little bit more than two weeks. And then what I'd like to have the city clerk and city manager do is have this as a discussion item one final time at our September 12th meeting. The hope would be that we can develop consensus and then vote on it at our subsequent meeting, and I believe our meetings are back-to-back in September because of the Labor Day holiday. So we'd be reviewing one final draft on the 12th, and then hopefully voting on the 19th. Are there any questions or comments this evening? Ms. Dylan?
So, thank you. One of the questions that I had the last time was, how does this document integrate with the other documents that we currently have? Has there been any opportunity to see that everything sort of is in line? Is there overlap? Is there anything that doesn't match?
So I, it would be my recommendation, looking at this and the existing, like, Code of Ethics, that this simply replace that Code of Ethics policy as it pertains to, like, the use of electronic devices, and one other I'm blanking on now.
Well, it might warrant to cross-reference this document.
Correct.
Our council guidelines, which were first adopted in 2002, and then I think revised in maybe 2013 and maybe again in 2017?
Correct. So if council is at a point where we're ready to adopt this policy, my recommendation would be that we subsequently incorporate language into those other two policies to make it clear that a violation of those policies may be considered an ethics violation underneath this new policy.
Okay, so kind of a trigger there. The other thing that we had spent a lot of time talking about is sort of that Board of Ethics, and whether we were going to outsource that, how that piece was going to work, and then, you know, incurring a cost to, you know, pay for it for an outside board. Where did that sort of?
Yes, so I posed a question on the city manager list serve. I didn't have many takers. There are not a lot of communities who have this separate body in place. Some communities already have existing language within their actual city charter that addresses issues of violations or misconduct by their members, so they feel like they're well-covered by that. But as far as outsourcing or finding a city partner or another municipal partner to go in with us, there wasn't a lot of traction there. So, I mean, the opportunity still remains, if we wanted to incur costs related to this, we could certainly identify another attorney or mediator who we assign, but that individual would still ultimately work at the discretion of council.
Right. But once again, so we're looking at having community members that, even though they're not a blood relative to a council member, could have a, you know, some sort of a connection to them. It's a small community. I'm really sort of stuck on that one, that I feel like it needs to be somebody from outside of our community that does not have any kind of interest within our community. I, you know, and the hope is that, you know, we never need to use that body, but I just don't know that we can find a non-biased panel within this community.
I hear what you're saying, and I think if you wanted to play around with some language and maybe submit it for our review and consideration in our next meeting, I think that'd be perfectly appropriate.
Thank you.
Yep. Any additional questions, comments pertaining to this policy or the amendments, modifications that were made from when we last discussed it? Mayor Protim-Girba?
And actually, it's sort of related to this, how do we provide the same type of standards or ethics policy for our appointed individuals on the boards and commissions?
Well, I mean, ultimately, any misconduct claim against an appointed official, this body would have to hear and make a determination on. So I would say that's a separate policy. It's not going to fit neatly into this one, and it's, yeah.
And I didn't think it did.
Yeah.
I just, as we were talking about this, thought that, you know, we need to make that as a policy, just so that we have that, this was needed as a result of not having previous.
I will add it to my policy creation list.
Well, if we're gonna have, if we're gonna have a, an event in which we invite our boards and commissions to attend, and I think the primary focus will be goals and objectives for the next year, we're also going to talk about updating and revising their bylaws to sort of a standard template across the board, I think that would be a great opportunity to talk about ethics, appropriate conduct, and maybe codifying some of that language in which it would apply to all appointed officials within our municipal portfolio as well.
Yeah, I would agree with you, either through individual updates to their own bylaws with a standard code of conduct language, or through a broader just code of conduct policy for appointments, to kind of put it out there, what would trigger removal of an appointee midterm.
Yeah, and especially, I see it more as being an overall reaching one, because if you start doing it individually between the different commissions, you just have, you just have confusion, so. Appreciate that, thank you.
Anything else reference this issue? Easy enough. Well, we will discuss it again on the 12th and hopefully adopt a policy on the 19th. If there's nothing further to come, oh, I'm sorry?
One other thing, and I apologize, I want to thank the DPW especially for preparing and getting the lawns mode out at the farm. I don't want to miss you guys, and also for the police that helped us control traffic. It's amazing, I put up three times as many no parking signs, but yet, public just doesn't like to read those signs, so our officers stepped up and helped keep it calm and no disputes. So thanks again to all of our staff.
Very good. We come now to the second public comment period, under the open meetings act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? The record reflect there are none.